We were saying.
And I don't always agree with you.
I was about to say that's an understatement, but yes, I appreciate it.
No, I always disagree with you on the chart.
Oh, you know, they closed schools already and stuff, yeah?
I, I don't.
Yeah, it's supposed to be. Oh, the weather tomorrow, so they already closed the schools for a full day because it's been the ice. And the timing is dreadful. It starts like at five in the morning, goes to one. So if you can do Zoom tomorrow, it's gonna be, like, the ice, I think, is gonna be more problematic than anything else.
Yes.
Test it.
Good evening. This is the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop. The date is February 5th, 2025. The time is 7:30.
That's me. That's me. Yeah.
What do you have yours at, Evan?
Yeah, can you hear me at least?
Can you guys hear us on this? No.
Well, if not, here, why don't you turn them off? Go to this for now, and we'll fix that later.
Let me just try it one more time. I think I'm.
Do you want Mark to come forward?
We're having some technical difficulties, so we're gonna take it slowly.
So mine's working. I don't know if that may have been yours. That was.
Can you hear Evan, Ellie? Go like that?
Yeah, can you hear me at all? Okay.
We better?
Can you hear me?
Good. All right, well, we will proceed. No idea.
That I can, thanks.
Ask the gentleman behind you.
It's, it's me. That's me. I don't know if it's so sensitive. It's definitely me.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Yep. Good. Here we go. Adequate notice of this meeting, oh, excuse me, the time is 7:33 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
And Mayor Pajianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's go right to public comment.
Hi there. Ellie Gruber, Ridgewood. A note to the community regarding plans for Sheddler was disseminated a week or two ago. This morning, I was really lucky to attend a workshop for science teachers, grades kindergarten to 12. Besides having a lot of faith in our teachers, the main thing, thrust of the meeting, was that facts matter. And that's why I decided to come tonight, because I was really thinking about that. The facts matter. So here's a few facts about Sheddler. Fact one, a berm was constructed for two reasons. One, the soil was mostly free. And two, concrete highway barriers abutting homes are not noise barriers. In fact, the highway noise is spread for streets, many streets away from the barrier. Fact two, the schoolhouse museum is on the list of historic places. The entire seven acres of Sheddler is also listed on this list of historic places. Fact three, the house cannot be moved, as it is composed of add-ons over the past 200 years. It would never be moved like the Lester stable was moved. A mover would look at it and say, no, it cannot be moved. Fact four, the residents dotted every I, crossed every T in 2017 to come up with a plan for the entire town, a medium-sized field. And we can argue about what we knew in 2017 about coconut turf or not. But they came up with a plan, a medium-sized field, trees, a walking path, the house, a community park. The path, the plan was not perfect for all. It was perfect because it was a real compromise. And all that has happened in this past three years or two years is that you have spent money, you hired a total incompetent, you have spent money, countless hours of your time. You could have had people playing on that field by now. As a result, we got soil testing, we have sides arguing with each other. What is the purpose of this? Glenn School has two fields, three fields you could play at. You have over 30 playing fields in this town. Why is this such a tremendous issue? And all you're doing is dividing this town when you should be unifying the town. And that's, if I had more time, I'd go into it more, but thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
Good evening. Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. My husband and I had the pleasure, I guess you would say, of sitting through your meeting the other night, the budget meeting. It was very interesting. And thank you for all the work and hours that you and all the administrators are putting in. I did have a couple of comments about the meeting. I did call in, and my hand was raised electronically, but I wasn't recognized, so I didn't get to talk. But here I am now. First of all, why was the tax collector hired at a higher salary than budgeted for? I thought, like, if you advertise a job and there's a salary, that's the salary. So that was one question. Second question is, how is it possible that a female employee, or for that matter, an employee of any gender, can step out of an office and see men in their underwear? This should never have happened once, and I can't believe it hasn't been addressed immediately. For everyone's sake, I don't think the men in their underwear want to be seen by anybody either. Next point is, the village manager said in a discussion about leaves that the more trees we plant, the more leaves we have to pick up, as if it was like a see what you're gonna get by planting more trees. Just commenting on that. Next, the deputy mayor asked about whether bagging leaves could be better than putting them in piles on the street. And it was my impression that her suggestion was summarily dismissed. And I think that really should be looked into. There are towns around us that require that leaves be bagged. There are also some towns that don't collect leaves at all. But I have watched the process with two trucks with the, like, pushers, and somebody driving each of those, and two front loaders, somebody driving each of those, and a container truck, somebody driving that, and somebody with a leaf blower. It's a very labor-intensive process, whereas if you had the leaves bagged, you got somebody driving the truck and somebody chucking the bags into the truck. I just don't know all the details, but I was dismayed that the deputy mayor's question about it was just, told couldn't be done. A next question, and maybe I couldn't hear this clearly, but it sounded like a $15,000 raise was given to one employee who apparently checks the recycled trucks that come in. Again, question mark, maybe I didn't hear this clearly, but this was referred to as a slight raise by Mr. Rudishouser. $15,000 sounds like a pretty good-sized raise. Lastly, and this is not regarding the budget meeting, since the mayor took it upon himself to publicly endorse a candidate for governor from the dais recently, I would therefore feel free to say that if anybody wants to sign a petition to get Stephen Philip on the ballot to be in the primary, please see me. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're gonna close public comment. I'm gonna open this up to the dais to address any questions, any responses to any questions. I will respond to one thing, Anne, and that is that it did not show up on this screen that you had your hand raised. My apologies. Again, a technical snafu, but no one here, especially me, would ever not recognize you.
We did have one caller, and you might wanna, we can talk after, that we acknowledged, but then the caller fell off. I don't know, that was on Monday meeting, Monday's meeting. We had one person, and they dropped, and then they said, okay, forget it. It's over.
And actually, we didn't, I didn't even have a screen, if you recollect. And if you go to the videotape, it'll show. I don't have a screen like I do now. We rely on our technical support in the room behind you to tell us when someone's on screen. And so they said there was somebody, and we waited, and then they said they fell off. So if that was you, again, our apologies, it was a technical difficulty. Anybody else?
Yes, I did want to respond to Ellie Gruber's comment. You said, why is it taking so long at Sheddler? Well, one reason is the DEP has told us we have to clean up the contamination there, and that it takes a long time to analyze, to design, to execute. And so that is one very significant fact.
So I too wanted to just jump in. So one of the things with Sheddler, upon taking our seat, Evan and I, we haven't really spent money outside of the testing. So a five, under our watch since joining here, I think it's $500,000, which went to that. We did hire a historical consultant, same as Conalene Hickey was hired for the house. Conalene Hickey's budget for the house was $250,000. I'm not sure what we brought in the park assessment for. We did hire Peter Primavera. I don't think it was, I don't want to quote it because it'll come back to me, but it was below $50,000. The money since I've joined here has been, the new bonds have been expressly to respond to the residents' desire to have the property tested, and rightfully. So that's, that's point number one. Two, in addition to being, you know, under now with the DEP on this terrible situation for the neighbors and the community with the soil contamination that nobody up here had anything to do with, where, because of the historic declaration at the beginning, we joined and there was no approved, approved plan with SHPO. So we couldn't have taken our seat and begun to move a single tree without SHPO. We have been unable to go back to SHPO until we deal with remediation, because it's insensitive. We don't know the scope or the scale of the remediation for the neighbors, for the town, for the taxpayers, and it's going to be expensive. So Evan and I, we have spent our time and money, taxpayer money, testing and moving it. So before the DEP gives us the green light, we also need to get another green light from SHPO. We're stuck. And it is super frustrating, equally frustrating, and I'll go to my, we don't have a tenant, and we don't have any public clamoring anymore for the house. We've been trying very hard to get two people into the house, and I'll do it in my report, but the house has been, we've issued the CO, and we really don't have a lot of community engagement on the next step for the house. So I just want to make sure. SHPO, we don't have any approval. We are encumbered by a state agency that is a direct result of the historic declaration. The money that we've spent has been expressly and primarily on testing, and rightful testing, because it's contaminated. So until we clear DEP and SHPO, the project's stuck. And that's, that's actually just a fact.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add was, and I think you hit upon it, was regardless of what we do there, we have to remediate the soil. I think, you know, that's one issue I think we can all agree on, and I think we're gonna continue to do that. So that's something I think our hands were tied on, and I do think the right thing to do is, again, remediate the soil, fix that before anything goes in there.
And one more point too, because I know Evan wanted to say, the only material change that we made to the 2017 plan was the size of the field. This, but, but everyone, there's a hard-fought plan, and the only reason, the facts that led to the change in size, is the persistent flooding that has left the Board of Ed uninsured on their field space, and us paying three times to remediate a field in the floodplain. So the only material change from the 2017 plan to the plan we intend to put forth is the size of the field.
Anybody else?
Mayor, with regard to Ms. Loving's comments, first, I think it should be clear that our current tax collector was promoted from within. And while that position, when the previous tax collector was not reappointed, was advertised and interviews from both internal candidates and external candidates were conducted, the salary adjustment came because that person was being promoted as opposed to being brought in at a specific salary from the outside. So I want to be clear about that. With regard to the recycling facility, I think Mr. Hamlin, and I don't want to speak for him, but having been sat across from him at that meeting, I think he was trying to make a point that down at the recycling and Parks Division, it is a very tight space. I've been in that space. I've toured that building, both inside, where the employees gather, the locker room area, the office area, the garage area. There are a lot of employees in a very small space, and I think he was trying to accentuate that fact to the council. Certainly, if any employees were ever made to feel uncomfortable, at least during my tenure here, we would address that immediately. That concern has never been brought to me. As a matter of fact, I never heard that story that was shared at the budget meeting until Monday night. But on a larger scale, this is the problem we're trying to address, right? Even the exterior of that building is problematic in the driveway area. You have residents coming in to drop off their recyclables. You have Parks Division employees and recycling employees trying to jockey for space. Sometimes they have to move one vehicle in order to get the piece of equipment that they need out and deployed. And we're trying to fix that spatial issue both inside the garage and outside in the driveway area. With regard to the trees, I think I was stating a fact. When you plant more trees, you're gonna have more piles of leaves in the fall. That was never in any way meant to be critical of planting more trees. As a matter of fact, last year, we again appropriated in our capital budget a significant amount of funding, I think $300,000, $300,000, $400,000, to plant new trees, both in the CBD and the residential areas. Fully support that endeavor. Work closely with the Shade Tree Commission to accomplish that. We were talking about tree ordinances yesterday, once again. But the reality is, is when you plant more trees, you're gonna have more leaves. And we all know and saw this fall, the significant amount of leaf piles that were throughout the village. And certainly, more hands working in that space in the fall, we're gonna be able to clean up the leaves more quickly, which is, I really believe, the desire of the residents, because I receive a lot of these complaints during the fall about how quickly we're able to pick up the leaves. And lastly, with regard to the $15,000 increase, I can tell you there was no $15,000 increase. I'd have to go back and listen to the meeting to see exactly what Chris was talking about. We only have two employees who are budgeted out of yard waste recycling. Both are on steps. So those increases that they receive, which don't equate to $15,000, are contractual under the blue collar agreement. So I'd have to go back and listen to that or speak to him about who he was talking to. But based on the spreadsheet I have in front of me, that $15,000 number is not accurate. That's all, Mayor.
Anybody else? Well, good. Let's get to our village manager's report.
Keith. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'm pleased to announce that our pavilion structure for Habernicle Park has been delivered. Came in two large truckloads. I was out there this, earlier this week, meeting with the contractor and with representatives from our Parks Division and our Engineering Division. This is probably a 12- to 15-week project contingent upon weather, but we're looking forward to having that pavilion structure erected up there in Habernicle Park and have it ready for probably a week or two into the spring season for baseball and softball. We had a meeting earlier this week with all of our staff here at Village Hall and some of our divisions that are off-site, with David Wilde from our Recreation Division implementing the final stages of the Master Library program. In the next month or two, all of the requests for facility uses, both internal, for village use and external, for sports fields, for room requests, any municipal facility that we allow the public or we use internally, these requests are gonna be made through the Master Library system. The Police Department is gonna have read-only access, so that they can manage who should be in these spaces, at what time, and who's reserved them. But I really want to thank Nancy Bigos, our Recreation Director, and David Wilde and her Recreation Division for putting this together and having as seamless a transition from paper requests to the online requests using Master Library. Today, I received an update on the North Walnut Underground Storage Tank Removal Project over on the parking lot. We have six underground storage tanks that have been removed as of today. Three remain. We are working with our LSRP to monitor that project. And right next door, the environmental remediation continues at the town garage. We're hopeful that in the next 30 days, both of those projects will be wrapped up. We'll be able to get access back for those who park on the North Walnut Street lot, who have been temporarily relocated. But I think this is really moving the ball forward along the Franklin Corridor, that we're addressing these longstanding, lingering environmental issues and remediating those properties, and we'll continue to do the required DEP testing that goes along with that. As I mentioned at last week's council meeting, but I think it's worth repeating, we have now had over 195 questions submitted from the public, specifically eight individuals who have submitted questions regarding the Sheddler soil testing process over at the property. Those questions have all been posted now on the village website. We have 31 new questions that were submitted on January 27th by another resident, and Matrix and the village are working through those questions to have those posted as soon as possible. Today, I had the opportunity to visit Willard School, Ms. Kelly's first-grade class, where we participated and celebrated World Read Aloud Day. We read the book, The North Star, and I want to thank the administration at the Ridgewood Public Schools and Ms. Kelly for the invitation to participate in that today. On February 28th, we are bringing back the blood drive that the village used to run years ago. It'll be conducted through our Health Department downstairs in the youth lounge. It'll run from noon to 6:00 PM, and we're working with the New Jersey Blood Center to be able to provide that service. So we encourage everyone, there will be an online signup, and we encourage everyone to sign up for that. Reminder about snow removal. Tonight, we're expecting a snow ice storm. Just want to remind everybody that sidewalks need to be cleared within 24 hours of the snow falling. Garbage pickup, both tomorrow morning and Friday morning, will be curbside, so please bring your trash containers to the curb, so that we can best keep our village employees safe. All village offices and departments will be closed on February 12th and February 17th in observance of Lincoln's Birthday and President's Day. There'll be no garbage or recycling pickup, and the recycling center will be closed on both days. Please check your village calendar for garbage and recycling pickups for the next two weeks, as they will change due to the holidays. The Department of Parks and Recreation will be holding a seasonal summer job fair on Wednesday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM in the community center on the lower level of Village Hall. Any 16-year-olds or older are eligible to come and apply for a variety of positions that we will have open for this summer. For further information, please call 201-670-5560 over at the Recreation Department for more information. Village Council upcoming meetings, February 10th, and note that February 10th is this Monday, in light of the holiday on Wednesday. We will have our public council meeting at 7:30. February 26th, back on the Wednesday schedule, will be our next work session at 7:30. And we have two upcoming budget meetings on February 19th and February 27th. Both of the budget meetings begin at 5:00 PM. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. And let's go to council reports. Siobhan, you want to kick it off?
Sure. So today, I had a meeting at the high school with our intern team to expand the idea that we need to have more civic engagement along many lines. One is that kissing balls need all-new bows, and that's the vibrancy of the holiday season impacts holiday shopping. We also talked about Mulch Monday and Project Pride. From our dream team of interns, three of them are graduating this year. And so that leaves us an opportunity to have more leadership and partner with new clubs, possibly with Interact. And in addition to that, they were, because we can't, because, oh, I can't tell everybody all this, they're very interested in having each of us come in and speak to the club. I know as alum, Pam and I have gone in, and I committed all of you to buying pizza for them and going in at some point.
You take Venmo, or how does that work?
No, 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 you're bringing the pizza. You're the pizza delivery.
Thank you so much, Siobhan.
So for the public who's.
Very generous of you, Paul.
For the public who's listening, a huge part of our mission here is to engage with our public school system and the youth, you know, kids who live here and have, they come up with such novel ideas, from MJ Aguilar to Grace, and we're gonna be expanding that. So each of the council members will be invited at some point, and we're looking for students who have vision, but we're also looking for students who have hands-on time and attention, because planting is tough and physical. So thank you to Jeff Neus, and thank you to all our interns. I'll be talking about my seniors probably a lot this spring. I too had the pleasure of attending Ridge Elementary School and doing Read Aloud, which is a lovely event across the United States. It's Read Aloud Day. I attended both kindergarten and third grade. They were very different flavors of civic engagement and had a variety of ideas. Shockingly, the two things that they were the most interested in is traffic and safety. They're very, you know, obviously, as young children, they're passengers in a lot of cars. They talked about traffic lights. Some of them expressed the corners that their parents hate the most. And they're very concerned with our parks and how they're used and if they're clean. And lastly, they all wanted you to know that they think there should be a roller coaster park in Ridgewood from the kindergartners, and that we, the village, should sponsor a video game Xbox night. So I want to thank Ridge Elementary and everybody who made that happen. And then lastly, this dovetails to some of the public comment. Today, I was able to go to the Zabreski Sheddler House with the Bergen County Peggy Norris Group and newcomers, who've both come before here. And we wanted to do a walkthrough of the house to see, you know, how's it looking? And is there a possibility, because neither of those organizations have any revenue, right? They don't, really aren't gonna be able to pay us a ton of rent, they're charities. And we had a very good discussion with both groups about the duality of both of them going into the house. Self-indemnifying, going in, opening it. Clearly, the newcomers have the meeting, gathering, social aspect with the dovetail with what they do with the historical session, and it went very well. They were both, I want to thank both of them for their time. I also want to report back to the council that, you know, the vacant house, it did have leaves in the foyer, and there was, you know, because it's been locked and sealed. in the foyer, and there was, you know, because it's been locked and sealed, it's in need of serious cleaning. There were a significant amount of flies in the bathroom, and it's, it wasn't really showable, but we showed it anyway. And for those on the Sheddler House who missed it on Monday, we're now occurring operating costs each year, and I, you know, you all have your budgets, and you saw the several thousand dollars, which is rightful money to make sure it's there. But I pulled the energy bill between Monday and today, and the energy even at a low level is $3,100 in 2024, in addition to the staff that we pay to go there. So I was very enthused that we have two people who wanna use it, who can self-insure, and we can begin the process of opening it up, breathing the life in. You know, the clamoring that, the call to action that got the house moving was the community gathering, you know, from the neighborhood, the meeting, the greeting, and then the historical element. If it works, that would be interesting to have both of them. So I wanna thank Carol Bukowski for opening it, and again, both the charities. The other thing is, 'cause the public's listening, there's, the reality is, is we're gonna have to furnish the house. And we've spent a sick amount of money, like a serious amount of money on this house, $2.6 million. We're gonna have to start to look for charitable donations to have period-appropriate furniture, or everybody starts to start surfing Facebook, and we're gonna find some. I'm not joking. There is no furniture, so we discussed some of the kickoff events. The first events might be Bring Your Own Chair, things like that. But that is stumbling forward, and I just wanna echo, the longer the house sits vacant, the worse it is for the house, the more at-risk it is for everybody. And I think the only two organizations who've come and expressed any desire, I think the duality of it dovetails very nicely. And that's it.
Thanks, Siobhan. Frank?
So I didn't have any committees since the last meeting, but this past Saturday, I attended a seminar for newly-elected officials that was sponsored by the League of Municipalities, and so it was great. Picked up some tips, was very informative, to make sure that I'm doing the best as I can sitting up here. And I also just wanted to point out to Heather and to Keith, that hearing some of the stories and case studies really made me appreciate how well Ridgewood is run, and the great job that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Evan?
Yeah, I'll be brief, as none of my committees have met since last Wednesday. I, nobody else mentioned it, but I get, did get to spend my Friday night with everyone up here, interviewing some wonderful, wonderful residents who were volunteering or applying to volunteer. I wanna thank everyone who volunteered. It was an embarrassment of riches in terms of the number of graduate degrees and work experience that were so right on task with what committees, the committees were looking for. If anything, the hard part was really figuring out, like, everybody was great, figuring out who of them would be better. But I do just wanna thank all the volunteers and everyone who did apply. And then also got to spend Monday night with these wonderful people up here. The budget hearings, I know at least some of you dialed in. I enjoyed myself. I don't know if I can say that for everyone else, but in all seriousness, I did wanna again thank Keith and the entire budget staff. Regardless of whatever differences we may have, the presentation was perfect, the binders were done well, everything was transparent. It was run extremely well, it was a good use of all of our time, and goes to Frank's point about just how well-run things are around here. So thank you, Keith, for that at work.
Thanks, Ev. Pam?
My committees have not met since our last meeting either. That includes Planning Board, we didn't have an application, so the full board did not meet, but our Subcommittee on the Master Plan Progress did meet, and we discussed the element of the master plan that addresses historic preservation. And Planning Board's next meeting will be the third Tuesday, I guess that's the 18th of this month. Green Ridgewood and Green Team will meet tomorrow, 7:30, in the senior lounge downstairs, weather permitting. There is a sports swap that six elementary schools are sponsoring. If you have sports equipment that you would like to give for reuse, the drop-off is May 8th, excuse me, March 8th, 12 to 9 o'clock at Hawes. And then you can shop the next day, March 9th, from 11 to 12, if you need sports equipment. And I bring that up right after Green Ridgewood, because reuse is so important for maintaining, for preserving our environment. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Pam.
Wait, Paul, before you go, I forgot, we did also have Fields, and this was discussed at Fields. So we had Fields on Tuesday morning, so after I spent the whole weekend with everybody all night, I got up at 8 o'clock and went to the Fields meeting. I do wanna let people know there were technical difficulties. The Board of Ed hosts the meeting, and for those of you who are unable to get into the meeting, we've asked that the Board of Ed put, because this has been a little bit of a problem, not in a critical way, but it's definitely a problem, we've asked the Board of Ed to set up, if you can't get into the meeting hybrid-wise, to contact, like, an emergency contact number. Fields was pretty, like, perfunctory, it was over in 22 minutes, which is a personal first for Fields, and it just really highlighted the accomplishments that'd be redundant going over on our side, and Keith Cook was out, so we didn't get the most robust update from the Board of Ed. But apologies to those who couldn't get in, we're very sorry, we're relying on the Board of Ed for the technical side, and it was just unfortunate that there was a failure. And going forward, there'll be like a, in case of a technical failure, this is the number to call and contact.
And for the record, I couldn't get in, so I had to call Siobhan, and she had to send me the correct link. So I spoke to, I spoke to Christine Corliss at the conclusion of the meeting by a telephone, and as Siobhan said, they're, they're working to make sure that the link is active. What I found was that the link that had been added to the agenda was actually January's link, so they just have to clear that up. But again, there will be an SOS email, so to speak, that if anyone does have difficulty getting on, you know, we'll, we'll add that to the agenda, or the school board will add that to the agenda, before they send it to the village for posting, and where they post it on their website, so that we can avoid having the same technical difficulties that we had on Tuesday morning.
Great. Thanks, everybody, and with that, let's get to work. Keith, take it away.
Mayor, at this time, we have a number of items tonight for Ridgewood Water, so I'd invite Director Calby to come forward and share those requests with the council.
Hello again, everyone.
Hello, Rich. Long time no see.
Long time no see, yes.
It feels like it was two days ago.
It was. It's good company. We have eight items tonight under Ridgewood Water. The first is a word of a contract for qualified end-user soil removal, testing, and disposal. This is for spoils that come from Ridgewood Water distribution repairs. We sought three quotes from qualified companies that do testing, and pick up the soil and dispose of it at a qualified facility. The lowest of the three was a company called Repco, and we're recommending a not-to-exceed contract in our annual budget amount of $100,000 for this service, and this is funded under the water utility operating budget.
What's ID27 soil?
So that, that is soil that's characterized as non-hazardous, but does contain certain levels of contaminants.
So contaminants are not always hazardous. Okay, so that's interesting. Thank you.
Rich, I had one question, 'cause I've seen it, you know, the bid is, is the buffer for a change order? 'Cause it's not to exceed, the contract actually is just a little higher?
We, we just use the tonnage amounts to qualify the low, low of the three. So the, the total amount in the green column was just to determine the lowest out of the three. But our not-to-exceed amount that we budget for every year is $100,000.
Okay.
Questions, anyone? Let's go.
All right, the next one is our annual GAC, or Granularly Activated Carbon Media Exchange Contract. This is a sole-source contract with Calgon Carbon. Once again, this year, we are budgeting for change-outs at both the Carr Facility and the 20 Facility. This is municipal reactivated carbon, so this is not virgin carbon out of the ground. We are reusing the carbon that is in the vessels. We are estimating at least two change-outs each, at each facility, so it's a not-to-exceed amount of $278,400 for the year, and it's also funded under the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
How long, how many, like, how often do you have to change the...
So it, it goes based on flow. These two particular plants are the two active ones, so we're utilizing them a lot. But generally, based on that flow basis, it's about twice a year, so say, six months. But, you know, once all 12 plants are online, we'll have more, more life out of them.
Thank you.
Pam?
We've switched these out before, then, right?
Every year, yes.
Anybody else? Good, let's go.
Next item is also a sole-source contract to Emerson Process Management. This is the manufacturer and software provider for our SCADA operation system, and this is for purchase of a remote telemetry unit, or RTU. These are the computer systems that control each of our well and treatment facilities. So this is to build one additional RTU with the complement to build out of our, our system. And this is an amount of $31,607.06, and this is funded out of the water utility capital budget.
Questions? Good.
Next item is our annual contract to furnish corrosion inhibitor. This is the chemical that is added to the water to prevent corrosion of lead and copper throughout the system. We provide, been providing this in the system since 2016. Since then, have been successful with our lead and copper levels. Most recently, in 2024, our lead sample pool was 2.7 parts per billion, when the action level's 15, so we know it's working. This is also a sole-source contract, 'cause we do not wanna change the chemical. We are testing currently other alternatives with New Jersey Institute of Technology, but until that report is done, we have to stay with the same chemical. Good news here is, there's a 4% decrease in the price for the year.
Ooh, I missed that.
We're recommending an annual contract for this year at $285,080, and this is funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
Rich, one, the lead lines are all replaced, then will we still have to add this chemical?
DEP will still require it, and part of the reason being that people still have lead in their homes.
Got it.
You know, there's lead solder and lead pipes in homes that people may not have replaced.
All right, thank you.
Great. Evan's gonna have to say something. 4%? That's excellent. Come on.
It is, it is 10 grand, so I appreciate it, it is...
Every dollar counts.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does this poly-orthophosphate affect the taste of our water?
No.
Good.
No. Next item is various security improvements at water facilities, namely the new PFOS treatment plants, also a couple of existing wells. This is a purchase under a cooperative. There are six facilities in total, not-to-exceed amount of $305,855.043. That consists of the installation of 44 closed-circuit television cameras and 16 door controls, and all the associated hardware, labor to install that at these seven locations. And this is funded out of the water capital budget.
Questions? I, I will say that you always ask for amounts that are, have a lot of zeros after them. In this instance, you will be dwarfed by the water pollution control facility requests, which are also, I think, you're handling, so just, just saying.
If I would've known, I would've tried to put more on for tonight.
I know.
Our, our next item is, this was an emergency. This is, you know, codifying the declaration that was made on Saturday, January 18th. We had a water main break, a severe water main break in Midland Park on 187 Sickamack Avenue. It was along the bank of a stream. It got to the, a depth that was unreachable by our crews. There was a very large tree on the bank that was in the way, and over the pipe, so I had contacted Mr. Kazmark, Mr. Rooney, we declared emergency, subsequently had to bring in Downs Tree Service, removal of the tree, and Conquest Construction to do the actual repair on the water main. So this is for the purpose of both of those repairs, Downs Tree is $4,850, Conquest Construction $16,534.08, and this is funded under the water utility operating budget.
I will be recusing myself from the aspect of this that involves Downs Tree Service, but not Conquest.
I couldn't quite picture from your memo what the tree was doing. Did it fall on this main, or was it growing on top of it?
From what I understand, it was growing on top of or near the area that had to be excavated, so it would've been hazardous to excavate with the tree in place.
I see. So I, I have to ask, 'cause we have the, did you plant a new tree when this one came down?
We have not.
Do you, I, I'm not kidding. So I know that the tree was...
This was just the middle of January, and it's also in Midland Park.
I know. So the, so Midland Park has a tree protection ordinance, or no? 'Cause I know Glen Rock was slow on this.
I don't know.
Could we find that out?
I could find out.
And I'm not kidding, because I feel that if Ridgewood money, we have, we have to start doing this in little bits and pieces. If, if a Ridgewood resident did it, they'd be required to repla, and by the way, the tree had to go, I get that, it was impacting a public safety issue of water, think Olive Shade Tree, but Ridgewood Water does own property in other municipalities that don't have strict tree provisions, so I'd like to see, you know, a tree would be like 400 bucks.
Sure, not.
I'd love when we ask Downs to remove it, if we could ask for replacement equivalent, and see that in future bids for Ridgewood Water. And I'm hoping everybody else thinks that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you for, I'm on board.
Thanks.
Assuming the property owner is interested in having a new tree, too, so...
Yeah, I don't know if it would go in the same place, you know, 'cause it, this was adjacent to a townhouse development.
Right.
Right. I mean, let reason prevail. I mean, you own a lot of property, Ridgewood Water, if it, I mean, Midland Park should stay in Midland Park, obviously, but if you need to do Ridgewood Water to Ridgewood Water and go up to Wyckoff with it, I would just feel better with the spend, and...
Yeah, it sets the precedent that if we're gonna do it...
And it'll, it'll start a conversation with these other municipalities as well.
Sure. Agree.
Anybody else? Let's go.
Last item, this is also, you know, codifying an, an item that's been underway. This involved the emergency that occurred back in September, October last year. This is for the actual design and permitting assistance for the West Glenn Booster Station that's being constructed to help move water from the low zone into the intermediate zone to address the issues with low pressure that involve with the boil water advisory. This is to the firm, Mott McDonald, the amount not to exceed $45,000 funded out of the water utility operating budget. I have good news tonight to report, that the permit was submitted to DEP, was deemed technically complete. We answered comments today from the reviewer, and he's advanced it to his supervisor for approval. The technical review actually got done before the administrative review, so we're, we're hopeful that we're gonna get this, this permit in the next couple of weeks.
And I just wanna thank Rich on this. Beyond this request for additional funding to, to continue with this project, we did receive a draft report from Mott McDonald on the analysis that they've been conducting since we had the boil water emergency up in the intermediate zone. It was very thorough, very complete, laid out the plan as to how we're going to move forward, and with the approval of this request next week, you know, we'll be well on our way to try to address these distribution issues come spring.
Do we know yet whether it's going to be above ground or below ground?
It's going to be a combination of both. There'll be a very, a much smaller, above-ground, call it can or metal pitless adapter somewhere. If you're familiar with that Linwood Well adjacent to Graydon Pool parking lot, we, we drilled a new well there, and there is about a 12-inch diameter can that comes out of the ground. That's gonna be the one visual aspect, and the remainder will all be underground in a vault. And the only other thing you'll see above ground is an electrical cabinet that will have the controls...
What, I'm sorry?
Electric, electric cabinet, and what the size of it is, I don't know, but those will be the two visual parts. We're able to sink most of it into the ground. And this will be permanent. Initially, it was gonna be a temporary installation, but based on what we were able to do, this could be permanent, which is good news.
I just wanna say thanks for moving this along, and obviously, the hope is that we will have this in before monewatering season, and, and we'll see how that goes.
That's our goal.
Yes, I understand, yeah, but you've moved this very, very quickly to avoid a second act of what happened last summer, so thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Rich? I'm good.
I think that's all.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Mayor, we have nothing under parking tonight. I just wanna note, before we get into the listing of the, the budget requests, we have done, we have started to do a thorough vetting and review, audit, if you will, of all of our open capital from prior year. And Bob Rooney, in addition to having his departmental meetings on the 2025 budget, both on the operating side and on the capital side, we are spending a significant amount of time looking back at our old capital accounts to see...
a significant amount of time looking back at our old capital accounts to see what the directors and their respective departments have and have not spent. The goal here is if there is a need, there, obviously, there was a need when the money was appropriated, if there remains that need, they should move on those purchases. If there is not a need, I anticipate that this summer, once we're through budget and we've completely vetted all of these capital accounts, we will be coming to the council with cancellation requests for money that was appropriated prior but is no longer needed. So you'll notice that tonight's agenda, many of these are requests from the various departments to spend some of those older capital funds. So I just want to preface these agenda items with that. So the first is award of contract through the New Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System, through Passaic Valley Water Commission, for two digester mixers at the water pollution control facility. This contract is recommended to be awarded to Rapid Pump and Meter Service for two new mixers for the digesters, not to exceed four hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. This follows the last major plant upgrade, which we've mentioned prior at the DAS here at the wastewater pollution control facility back in two thousand and five, and this is, again, coming out of prior capital.
Questions?
Okay.
Let's go.
The next, again, also coming off the Passaic Valley Sewage Commission Cooperative Pricing System, is the purchase of return activated sludge pumps, abbreviated RAS. This is another contract that will go to Rapid Pump and Meter Service through the cooperative. Again, two pumps, not to exceed two hundred and nineteen, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Questions? Good.
Okay, the next is an award of contract for a one skid-mounted NWP booster system. This will replace a pump that is not working, and the electrical controls have been faulty and in some cases failed. This is again through the co-op with Rapid Pump and Meter Service. The purchase for the new booster system is four, two hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Okay.
The next is award of contract of an eight-inch trailer mounted diesel bypass pump. This too is through the cooperative with Rapid Pump and Meter Service. This is for the purchase of a new eight-inch trailer mounted diesel bypass pump, not to exceed one hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The bypass pump will also be available to drain Graydon Pool each spring as we prepare it for the summer season, and again, prior capital.
I have a question about this. This one didn't quite tell us the age of the existing pump. It just says it's old.
I don't know that, but I can ask Chris to clarify it and let you know tomorrow.
My guess is it dates from two thousand and five as well, but I just was wondering.
And I had a question on the resolution. So the total's one sixty-three, two-two-five?
Mm-hmm.
But on the detail, I'm only seeing forty-four and one oh four. I'm missing a balance, so I don't, on the whereas, on page three?
Mm-hmm. I mean, the, on page one, it has the quote, the one sixty-three, two-twenty-five.
And then-
And then there's two capital line items, so there's fifty-eight, seven-eighty-three, and then one oh four, four-forty-one.
Got it. I didn't see the fifty-eight.
All good. Next.
Are we good? Okay. The next is an award of purchase of a dissolved oxygen sensor system. This monitors the levels in the four aeration tanks down at the water pollution control facility. This contract is being recommended to be awarded to Miller Energy, Inc., for the purchase of that new sensor system, not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Everybody good? Good.
Next item is the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four F-550 chassis and dump body. This is for the Streets Division. It'll replace a vehicle from two thousand and eleven that is being taken out of service. The contract is being recommended to be awarded to Route Twenty-three Auto Mall under the New Jersey State Contract Program, not to exceed eighty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-six thousand, uh, three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Questions?
Nope.
Good.
All right. Next item is also for Streets. This is a similar request for the second purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four F-550 chassis and dump. The only thing different here is this one's slightly less, eighty-two thousand six-sixteen.
And these are both out of old capital?
Yes.
And Keith, does this help us with budgeting, or are we gonna be able to make not buy something here?
So, so again, you know, I look at the capital budget as a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle.
Right.
Competing interests, see where the pieces fit. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to utilize the old capital requests before new ones are made. So, for example, I think we're down to under three hundred thousand dollars on the requests for the sanitary trucks that we talked about at the budget meeting, because we've pulled together some old capital to pay the balance. So what we're utilizing here will have an impact and lessen the burden on what we need in two thousand and twenty-five.
We're having math problems again. So, again, the attachment gets you to eighty-two, but in the actual resolution, it's just seventeen-five. I don't, right.
Seventeen-five is the statutory limit.
No, it's okay. No, I was just gonna make the point that I'm all for spending old capital if it's there, but don't spend it just to spend it.
No, 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 these are all-
And in your credit, I mean, you're explaining what you're replacing, they're all the trucks of, but I don't want to have a situation where folks think to use it or lose it. I'd love to just not spend the money if we don't need it.
And I think that that was the point that he made earlier, that after the budget process, they're gonna, they're gonna go through this old capital that's still there and begin to cancel any old capital.
Which, by the way, late last year, we did with the water, with Ridgewood Water. We had a cancellation resolution for old appropriated capital that they were not going to use, and we canceled that out, and now we plan to do the same thing with the general capital budget. Okay?
Ladies?
Seventeen-five is the, is the, is the statutory limit, but the eighty-two, six-sixteen matches. Right? Okay?
Next.
Okay, next item is number eight. This is the purchase of snow plows to fit the two prior requests, again, for the Streets Division. We're gonna acquire two new snow plows from old capital accounts, and this is not to exceed fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents.
And we need this because it fits these trucks and the old ones don't?
These plows will outfit those trucks that you just, that you just authorized.
Whereas our old plows won't fit on these, I gather?
I'd have to ask Chris that question. I mean, I can tell you that some of the plows that we have are old and antiquated, and when you have a new vehicle, it's not necessarily best practice to affix an older plow.
I would assume that, I'd just be curious to double check.
I mean, I will tell you, to Mike Janta and his crew down there, Anthony, our mechanic, you know, they, they get the useful life out of all of their equipment. Sometimes it's done with duct tape and bubble gum, but they're definitely making sure that it lives out its full life down at the, down at the garage.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is the transfer resolution requested by Bob Rooney. It's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in the current fund and three hundred and ninety thousand out of Ridgewood Water.
Good.
And finally, we have a shared services agreement that's being proposed with the borough of Ho-Ho-Kus. This is for our Signal Division to provide maintenance and repair services, miscellaneous traffic signage, and assistance with the installation of holiday decorations to Ho-Ho-Kus. I know that the initial attachment of the fee schedule was not included in your original packet, but Heather subsequently sent that out to the council, and she also provided a paper copy at the DAS tonight.
I just want to mention, Chris also mentioned that they're also gonna include the fiber network. Does they do that work in Ho-Ho-Kus? That's not in the agreement, and he's updating the agreement before we vote on it.
What do you mean by fiber network?
So Signal maintains the fiber network, not only in the village, but we also do work for Midland Park, Ho-Ho-Kus, and Glen Rock, so Chris's recommendation is that we include that language too in this document, so that it covers us for the work that Rich and his crew are doing when they work in Ho-Ho-Kus on our fiber network.
Do we have a, I'm sorry, do we have a projection on what we might stand to?
I don't, you know, I asked that question. It's a matter of doing some accounting to see what amount of hours we put in in two thousand and twenty-four. We can certainly do those calculations, I just don't have them tonight.
And this is certainly, as you know, is something very important to me and the council and our taxpayers. This is, this is the way forward, that, you know, when we can, when we can work with our partners, our neighbors, Board of Ed, we save everybody money, so.
Yeah, let's do more of these. I like these.
I was gonna make my joke, is there a conflict now with the Christmas decoration competition?
As long as ours are better, it's okay.
Ours are better.
Ours are going to be better, and the lamp posts are in here, so we can, it's great.
All good.
So I was kind of curious about how the actual hours of labor expended are calculated. Is that an average that's used for the calculation, or is it the particular employee's level hour, broken down into hours? I just wa, I'm just kind of curious.
I believe it's broken down by the staff that's utilized, depending on what type of function we're performing, and then the vehicle and equipment charges are listed with actual hourly rates.
Yeah, that's, that I understood. And then this is six months. If it goes well, we'll do another-
Yeah, I mean, to some degree-
It's gonna be the year. I mentioned that to Chris as well, that I think he took a former contract that we had with Ho-Ho-Kus a few years ago, and I think it was a six-month situation, but this is supposed to be the entire year this year.
Oh, so that might change.
It will change.
When it gets for us, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a proposed change to Chapter Two-Forty-Nine Streets and Sidewalks, and this is after a thorough analysis by engineering and the staff there. The village has had a program in the past where sidewalk contractors have been able to acquire an annual permit, eliminating the need to obtain a permit for each of the locations where they do work. This was implemented, I think, back in two thousand and fifteen. Chris, through discussions with his staff, is recommending that the village rescind the annual sidewalk permit and replace it with the attached ordinances to the memo you have in front of you. Rescinding this annual sidewalk permit will give the village better control of the sidewalk repair, which he thinks is necessary, and it will also allow for them to coordinate tree inspections, because a lot of the sidewalk work correlates with having trees removed. So they are recommending that. They actually did an analysis of the financials relative to this annual permit, and they believe that from January of two thousand and nineteen through January of two thousand and twenty-five, the village has lost approximately twenty-one thousand dollars in revenue, whereas they would have better control if they were offering individual permits rather than an annual permit.
Questions?
I mean, it said that there's nine annual permits. Is it, is it, like, how many, does those nine companies represent the majority of work that does sidewalks, or is it just they're the ones that were the ones that picked up the annual?
I can't tell you every contractor that pulls out a permit. I can certainly ask them to provide that number to us. I think we have nine people who do enough volume of work within the village that it behooved them from two thousand and fifteen now to get that annual permit. The problem is, is that there's also a lack of accountability, because they go out, they have the annual permit, they're not reporting back that they're doing that particular sidewalk, and then we have a tree issue, a root grinding issue, a variety of things that could arise in that circumstance. But I can, I can find out how many permits were pulled in total, but nine of them were annuals.
Because my only, my only question, not really concern, is just what impact will this have on our residents? Will it make it slow down how fast the sidewalks are done? Like, I understand from our perspective why we want it, but have we just looked at it from the residents' view?
I think it'll also maybe increase the price, because it might also increase the price.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Because the contractor now has to go down to the, to the building department for every single job. I spoke to two of these guys this week for my property, and they're backed up to start with, and, and, you know, I just, it's, I'm concerned that it's gonna be passed along to the customer.
Yeah, I have the same concern. I actually did this when I first moved to Ridgewood, like, twelve years ago. One of my moving gifts was finding out I had to redo the sidewalks in front of my house because the tree had pushed up the sidewalks, and I recall, the village was very helpful. They gave me the list of the folks who had the annual permits. They said, "We can't tell you which one to use, but these are the ones that have the annual permits." And I used one, it was not cheap, but it got fixed, but that's my concern, is that if this is gonna cost these companies more per job, they're just gonna pass it on to our residents. And I hear you, Keith, on wanting greater accountability, but if this will cost our residents more money, is there a way to keep the status quo but somehow infuse more accountability for the, you know, the company?
I mean, I don't know that there's a way to, for the village to be able to determine whether or not it will or won't cost more, and this is the first I'm hearing about any concerns from the council. I have, in the lead-up to this meeting, no one shared that with me. I mean, we can certainly have Chris, we can hold this to a subsequent work session and have Chris come in and give his insight. He deals with this every day. I think the real concern that I had was when engineering, you know, did the calculations, and there was a significant loss in revenue. And I do hear from, you know, I'm the one that gets the phone calls when either residents, folks who are involved with Shade Tree, council members call me and say, you know, "Why is this tree being taken down?" And it has to do with a sidewalk issue. You know, this would give us greater control of that. So we can certainly have Chris come in if you want to hold off, but I yield to your direction.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, yeah, I think Chris should come in, and I mean, my question is, is there a way to have an annual permit but require the contractor to notify or even get approval from us before actually starting the work? That way, it doesn't cost any more money. That would, I can give the greater accountability as well to us and give us some more oversight. And I'm also wondering, is there a way for them to do it electronically and not physically come in here every time they want to do a job? Because I hear what you're saying, Keith, and you're, and I agree with your goals. I'm just worried, I think, to what Frank and what Pam are thinking, is the downstream impact to our citizens?
Well, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sorry, and, and, and I, I think it's important to have Chris here, but I'm reading his memo, and if I'm reading between the lines correctly, I think that there is a requirement that they inform the building department-
And they're not.
Because, yeah, because it says, "When they remember, they notify us." And I think that that's, that's the whole issue here.
That's the loss of control that he's concerned about.
Well, and, and the other loss of control on the other side of this is that when it impacts a tree, you typically have a neighborhood, because it's a shade tree, right? And there is a very, because they'll come in that day, they'll lift it up, and they'll be like, "Oh, this tree's gotta go," and there will be a lot of noise through, through my life, through Keith's, through engineering, debating, measuring, and, you know, now the homeowner has to be there, because sometimes those trees are half-on, half-on, the bump outs. I would say probably ninety percent of the tree engagement with the sidewalks ends up in a very negative space, one way, and negative, not like all around. It's like the people who want to save the tree sometimes are very negative about it. The homeowner gets very negative about the cost of this, and it, I would say, each year since I've been on the council, there's like twelve of these where it gets a little out of hand.
And, and just a thought, Keith, if perhaps you could flesh this out with Chris ahead of time, there may be a middle ground here where we keep this, this ordinance and the, and the annual permit, but a fine is imposed if they fail to notify us.
I, I think we'll have him, we'll send an invitation to him to be here at the February twenty-sixth meeting, and he and I'll talk before that, but we can, we can talk more at that meeting.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, that that would perhaps be the best of both worlds. It is more efficient, it is, it is a better way to go, it keeps things moving. I mean, the building department does get backed up as it is.
Right.
But there, there are some teeth in the failure to notify that may not exist now that would, if it is significant enough, it would prompt the contractors to ensure that they remember. So just a thought.
Understood.
Great.
And then finally, on the agenda is just authorization to sign the Burton County Trust Fund Project Contract. This is for the Veterans Field Lighting, a hundred and three thousand that we're receiving from the county to help fund that endeavor.
I always love when you ask permission for us to, to accept a hundred thousand dollar grant.
I think Keith's just taking a victory lap, and this is the way he's doing it.
No, I, I need your blessing.
We know, we know you do it.
Trust me, if I would have signed it, if I could have signed it by myself, I would have signed it.
I know you would. And so with that-
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Let's go back to public comment.
I just want to say about the sidewalks, if you recall, Ann Walsh and neighbors did an experiment on South Irving with a sidewalk that was more flexible, so then the tree wasn't removed, and those sidewalks are beautiful, I walk them. Have you considered that solution? Because then you don't have to take a tree down. Remember, they, they discovered a new kind of sidewalk. The second thing I wanted to say, and Siobhan, I can't debate you because I get three minutes and you get as much time as you want, but I'm gonna say, as far as the berm is concerned, But I'm gonna say, as far as the berm is concerned, it was an idea, that was a good idea, that was done poorly. The trees especially. It was almost two years, and I heard from Matt Rogers when I asked, "Why the heck aren't those trees replaced?" Because I think the tree company that was supposed to guarantee them never did, and if I understand what happened, there was a lawsuit back and forth. So that led to a lot of confusion, and I think, in a way, I'm gonna say this, because Chris is probably gonna hate me, because I always thought he did a good job. I think he did a lousy job on this with the soil. It was supposed to have all been tested. We were told it was all tested. But yes, we, when the berm went up, Siobhan, you weren't on the council. When the berm went up, we asked the question, "It was all tested." That's what we got. The soil was all. We didn't know that it came from other places. That was on him. And as far as taking time and money, that is not the fault of the neighbors. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
Good evening. Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. So I had a couple of questions, and I know, Keith, you mentioned earlier that the questions and answers are on the village website related to the contamination. So I haven't digested all of it. You know, I plan to, to do that. But I did have a question, because tonight it was Ridgewood Water asking to award contract qualified end-user soil removal testing and disposal of Ridgewood Water soil spoils, which I guess are piles of contaminated dirt or other materials. But according to the Matrix report, the Ridgewood Water Company did place spoil piles at Shedler, and these were placed in the northwestern portion of the site near Block 4704, Lot 12. So based on that impacted material and the lack of, I guess, explanation regarding the suitability of the fill for the site, the NJDEP was not satisfied with the information for this fill source. So therefore, obviously, that was, you know, where the NJDEP got involved and wanted to evaluate the soil or make Ridgewood evaluate the soil. So I guess my question would be, were there contracts awarded? Because if you're asking now for a qualified end-user, why would Shedler be an end-user of contaminated spoil piles? That's, like, not too, you know, difficult to figure out. And then also, there was snow removal that also had rock salt and other chemicals in it dumped at the Shedler property. So to me, those two things seem, I mean, I don't know if gross negligence is really the word to use. Maybe it's not. Maybe, that's not an oops. I can see where, you know, certain standards weren't applied to the six sites that were actually, you know, bringing in that soil, because you're looking at something, and I guess mistakes can be made. It's unfortunate, but with spoil pile, that I don't understand. Sorry, I have a cough dropping in my mouth, by the way, because I have a sore throat. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, which was a concern, is that in the wetlands application for Shedler, it said that no hazards were on the site. So this was Suburban Engineering's wetlands application. They noted that there were no hazards at Shedler, yet lead, mercury, benzo, pyrene, and benzoanthrazene were considered hazards. And those were, were, you know, mentioned by Matrix to have been 100% in existence. So can you clarify what Suburban Engineering meant by no hazards on the site? Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else? Seeing no one, and no one is online, I will close public comment. Would anyone like to address any of the commenters tonight?
Mayor, just a few issues. First, Ellie, we're still working with that flexible sidewalk material. I know that the hope is, is that this winter, we can really get a full understanding of how it handles snow, de-icing materials, all that type of thing. I know the deputy mayor has been an advocate for continued use of this, but cautiously, because we want to see what a trying winter, what effect it has on that type of material. So we've had a little more snow this year than we did last year, and we're gonna do an evaluation in the spring of where those flexible sidewalks do exist. So we are, we are, are working in that space. With regard to the berm, again, I, I wasn't here during that period. That's obvious. I can tell you that there was testing conducted for all of those soils. What I can tell you is that I don't think all of the standards that are applicable under DEP rule were necessarily applied. I, and this is a great segue into my response to Cynthia. We've implemented some new policies here, especially when we're talking about soil. We are including an LSRP in almost every situation when soil needs to be tested. There is no one on staff who is a soil expert, myself included, and that's why we pay an LSRP, a licensed site remediation professional, to evaluate these testing results and make a determination as to what the proper disposal process would be. There are always going to be spoil piles from Ridgewood Water. We have water main breaks. They have an obligation to excavate, and they have an obligation to put a certain standard of fill back in that hole once their water main break is, is repaired. Those soils that were taken out of the ground then need to be tested and properly disposed of. So that's the contracts that, those are the contracts that Rich is entering into with these facilities in order to make sure that everything is properly tested and everything, depending on those test results, is properly disposed of. So I think that's an important point to make. With regard to the wetlands LOI, I, I can't speak to that specific forum. That's why we contracted Suburban to conduct that study. But what I can tell you is that everything that Matrix submitted to the village, which I think the last report was last August, and they will be back soon, that information was all shared with Suburban. So they were filling out that application with full disclosure of everything we knew as of last August.
I am wondering what the date on the LOI was, because the LOI was initiated prior to our awareness of, because I was on the phone with the Suburban. So Suburban was contracted to do the LOI, because it's a requirement for SHPO, and we did that before we were even aware of the soil. Do you know the date, Cynthia? Okay, so I think you might have a timing issue. I, I'd love to check it, and I don't want to be overly defensive with it, but Suburban was gauged, so the LOI was past due from the prior administration. In order to move forward with SHPO, we needed to do an LOI, which is the document that ensures that it's not floodlands. So when we came in...
Wet, wetlands.
Wetlands, sorry. Wetlands, sorry. There were several past due things for the application. The LOI was one. We engaged Suburban early in my term, and the contamination came out later. So I'd, I'd love to see the two dates on that, if you could circulate that tomorrow. I, I also want to respond. So earlier this week, it's a story, because sometimes public comment, for me, I take very personally. Ellie, you can always call me. Three minutes. I have 30 minutes for you, a cup of coffee. You can always call me. I know you have my number. I know, because for years I was an advocate, how frustrating and limiting public comment can be, and I am here for you with that, and I think Pam knows that, and all of us in our advocacy gets it. And I never want it to be like the dais gets the last words. You can always call me. And earlier this week, I did have coffee yesterday with somebody who's totally oppositional to my views on turf, and I want to tell this whole council and the community, it's delightful. It was great. We found commonality in things that we love about town, so never feel that that's the only way to contact us. I also want to say that it's a shame when I have to make defensive clarification phrases, but I really feel the need to. Nobody on this council had anything to do with the design of the berm or the execution of the berm. Nobody. In fact, for those on the advocacy side, I was with you clamoring for more public light on a project that had stalled. A project that the prior council not only built the berm with contaminated soil, but submitted, one, and then, two, plans in complete and total secrecy to the state authority. Nobody knew about the pickleball plan, and the prior council, in their accountability, outside of parks, the fields, everybody submitted it. I don't, no one's blaming the neighbors for anything. We are collaborative with the neighbors. When I think about what to put in the house, we want to be mindful of the neighbors. We love hearing from the neighbors. The testing, we're spending it. We don't want ever anybody to think that. And lastly, with respect to the berm, when I took my seat and we found out that certain elements of the berm were failing to thrive, I went to legal, and with engineering, we stopped the payment on that, and we recovered taxpayer money for the, the trees. There were 55 of them that failed to thrive. And this council came to an agreement with that vendor, and that's good work. That's good work. It's a very difficult position to say, "Oh, it wasn't us." But it's also confusing, because when the public watches this and people watch this, I do get questions like, "Hey, were you involved in that?" And we weren't. So I don't want to create, like, blaming distance, but I want to create clarification distance. Nobody on this council, at that point that the berm was, was here, was part of the decision-making. And everybody on this council, and they all have voices, but I'm just, is committed to remediating a problem that the whole community agrees is not a good situation for the neighbors, the community, or the park. And again, if you need more of my time, because I just doubled yours, call me. I'm, I'm available for that.
And Mayor, just one other issue to Ms. O'Keefe. If you read through the questions, especially the last set of answers that were provided in the last few weeks, there are specific questions that are on point about these spoil piles. There is some misinformation that I think's been, been discussed out in the community about two different soil piles, and there are specific answers to those questions embedded in the spreadsheet that is now posted online for public consumption. So if you want to get clarification on the soil piles and what went where, it's embedded in those answers.
And thank you, Keith, because I'm a little unclear on what soil spoils means. In the memo that we have for this contract, it's for disposal of both clean fill and ID-27 soil material. So I think, I, I don't want people to get the impression that every time Ridgewood Water digs up some dirt, it's contaminated. So soil spoils, as I read this memo, can have both clean soil and the ID-27 soil that has contaminants. So I can't look it up on my phone right now, because we don't use our phones on the dais. Otherwise, I'd just check Merriam-Webster.
Good. Anybody else? And with that, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Let's go.